Welcome to Around Town featuring what's going on here in the greater Concord area. I'm your host Dick Cotton and yes, I survived my trip from Ann Arbor. I'm back here and right now for the holiday season. Yes, I know if you watch TV especially on Hallmark, all you see is Christmas songs and everything else. But right now we're here in the apple season and also the middle of a political season. And so today I'm very happy to have with me Tom Proto, who is a member of the Concord School Board. He's an incumbent running for reelection and of course he was from the class of seventy-one. Concord High, in other words, he was a year behind me. But of course, we don't, we don't age at all.
No, not at all.
You certainly haven't got ball headed too much and you've still got great uh, blonde hair versus the gray hair. Yellow, white, whatever, you know, and uh, but it's nice seeing you after all these years. And you really married into some history because your father-in-law for us was the former Concord Fire Chief for many years, Clayton Higgins.
Right, right.
And the Higgins family lived on the Heights here for, my goodness, for years over on Robinson Street first. That's where I met them or met, that's where they lived. And then they moved, I guess, to Pembroke Road down by, then it was across from Sprague Electric, right?
Well, well, it was East Side Drive and then.
Okay, then they, okay, they went to East Side Drive first and then back over to, see how much they missed the Heights.
That's what it was.
Yeah, and now they're back, no, of course Rachel passed away a number of years ago. She was the Doris at Runlet, if I remember right.
Concord High School. She was at Concord High, she may have been at Runlet at first too.
I remember her at Runlet, yeah, I remember her at Runlet.
Maybe before my time.
Yeah, yeah, a little, maybe a little bit because.
But she was definitely at Concord High School, I know that.
And your sister-in-laws, I remember, I don't, I don't remember one of them. Margaret was the one a year ahead of me and then Patty, your wife, was a year behind me in your class, I guess.
Right.
Yes, so, school days have changed, haven't they?
They certainly have, they certainly have.
What elementary did you grow up in?
Well, actually I went to Walker School where the new Benny uh, facility is.
Did a nice job there.
And they really did, they, they did that school proud. Um, I went to Walker from kindergarten to grade six, as you went to Dame, K to six in those days. And then I went to Runlet Middle School for seventh, eighth and ninth grade.
No, at Walker, just out of curiosity, did you have Mrs. Saddleay as a teacher there, Doris Saddleay?
I did not.
No, or Mrs. Giles, Priscilla Giles, was she taught, did she teach there?
I don't remember if she did, but she eventually taught with me. And that's the, that's the amazing thing about growing up in this community. And then coming back to teach in that same community, you begin to be friends with people who used to be your teachers. And uh, and I've had the fortunate, um, I've been fortunate enough to have Priscilla as a very dear friend for all these years. And uh, as well as Frida Spiro and who I still see at the Holiday Whovestet. And uh, and a number of other people who are still around.
So there was Doris Saddleay, now she may have been a different last name at that point in time. But she remarried John Saddleay, who ran Concord Lumber.
Okay.
And that's how I met, that's how I met her, so she was, they were big, they were big in the Grange at that time.
In those days, we didn't know first names that quickly, it was Mr. and Mrs.
And there was a Catherine Topliff from Pembroke.
Kay, Kay Topliff, I remember her.
Yeah, my cousin married her um, son Alan and yeah, they taught, I said, when I heard that, I said, my gosh, they taught at Runlet and I mean, at Walker School in Concord, I didn't know that, interesting, you know? Gosh, I know because all the ones you think about today. And like I said, I cried when I saw what they were doing at Dame School, it's dope stuff. I don't care, I mean, they, you know, they kept the new wing somewhat.
Right.
But the wing that I remember and then most of us, that Margaret would ever remembered was the other wing, that's what they tore down. And of course, the big auditorium, they saved, but of it. But um, yeah, it does, it takes, right, to think back memories, my gosh, sixty years ago or fifty years ago, it's like, where did time go?
And Dick, I can remember my days at Walker School, some of my days at Walker School like they were yesterday.
I know.
And I, and I put this in my, in my sort of history that it's, it's there where I began really being interested in education. I mean, I, I really liked all of my teachers, I liked school a lot. I would leave to go home for lunch, spend five minutes and get back to school. I mean, I, and Runlet and Concord High School were very similar, so that's where I.
I hated my mom.
Yeah.
I hated it because of some things that happened there. And of course, you know, when we were at Dame School, it was, we were all friends.
Sure.
Didn't matter if you were a member of the Grand Society or down in the lower class, we were all friends.
Right.
Nobody made fun of each other, nobody called each other names. You never would see a fight in a room like that, we were all like one big family. And then we got to Runlet and forget it.
Well, and I think that that's the, I think that that's one of the big missions of any middle school administration right now is to take the largeness out of a middle school and get it more personalized like you felt at your elementary school.
Yeah.
And there are ways to do that with physical plant and with philosophies that can be done and, and are done and are some that are very successful and, and Runlet is endeavoring, I know that they are. Jim McCollum down there in his group are endeavoring to do that same thing.
Because when I was at Runlet, I was in seven A. Now someone would say, oh wow, seven A, that's a smart class if you're an A. No, unfortunately, it was down toward, not bottom, but it was down near the fourth of the bottom, maybe the fourth of the bottom. But seven H was up here, seven G was up here, but down here was seven D, seven C and all that jazz and, you know, it was just.
It's amazing how quickly we figured that stuff out, right?
It was horrible. And then I got shoved into, in the eighth grade, into the college group. And oh my gosh, Tom, I was out of my league. I had no idea how to do modern math, no idea, I never studied Ivanhoe in English. Freddie Fenton was my teacher.
Sure.
And um, you know, I mean, I was, but they wouldn't change you. No, Dick, your marks were excellent in seventh grade and my folks couldn't help me, they didn't know how to do modern math. Old-fashioned rhythm music, no problem, but modern math, forget it. And you, and again, this is where you became, this is where a lot of it, well, seventh grade, some of it too. But this is where you mixed in with the grand, I call them the grand high society. Because if you're from Auburn Street, Liberty, up in that area, you were from the grand high society. If you're down from South Street Broadway to the Bow Line, you were wannabes to the grand high, but you weren't quite there, but you went to Conan. See, that was a, that was a different school boy, because a lot of the smart ones went there supposedly. And God forbid if you ever associated with the river, river rats up at River Hill, that area, oh, you didn't talk to them. Even East Concord wanted nothing to do with the Heights kids, not whatever, but anyway, you're, you're running for reelection.
To, to talk to that for just a second, it, it's been part of my life as a school teacher for twenty some odd years and a building principal for a number of years, to erase that kind of thing.
Yeah.
To, to equate so that all kids feel like they belong and that's, that's a hard job. It takes tireless work by all members of the staff.
Yeah.
And uh, and, and for kids to really be made to believe that. It can't be just superficial, it's gotta be very, very real that you do belong and by actions and not by words.
Now, in the back of your shirt, do you have a loop on the back?
I don't know.
A little loop, turn, just turn around quickly, maybe, nope, you don't. Well, back in my day, and of course Ian's heard these stories so much, he's probably sick of them. But in my day, in your day too, the shirts had a loop on the back of them.
Right.
And they called them fairy loops and the girls would come along and pull them off. And I'd go home and my mother would say, who did this to your shirt? And you wouldn't know if you dared say anything or not, she'd, you tell them I go to come buy you a shirt then, because I paid good money for that. Of course, the girls would see how many loops they got in one day, you know, it's like, you know, that was, it was terrible. Because if, you know, I mean, hey, I could ruin a, a boy's clothing. And you were the same time period that I was, that if you didn't have the, the boy, if you didn't wear the Beatle boots like the society boys did, you were nothing. If you didn't have in sixty-seven, the flowered shirts with the white collars, you were nothing. That was, that was the start of the psychedelic era.
Okay.
And you know, I got my pair of Beatle boots in nineteen sixty-nine and they were out of style by then. Here, I thought I was a big deal, I got a pair of Beatle boots, Michael bought me a pair. And they were just out of style. But anyway, it was just, it was just, you know, it was just interesting to see how things, and by the time you got to high school, I mean, a lot of those had transferred to Brady or Dairyfield or some other private school.
Some to St. Paul's.
Yeah, St. Paul's, yeah, or some other private school and, you know, but yeah, I can, I could name them off now, the ones that I never saw again, but it was just too bad because life is so short. And you, and I love meeting, you know, being friends and stuff and it was a very sad time in my life to go through school. And I became a member of the Grange here in Concord because I didn't fit in in the school clubs. You know, I, I just didn't, I was never made to feel like I fit in. But in the Grange, they adopted me like crazy and I became, really got high up in it, like the Masons with the, with the D-Malayan stuff, you know?
And I, and again, I, I think that that's, in schools right now, more teachers, more administrators, more support staff are assumed with students as individuals. So that if they suspect or find something like that, they're working to fix that. And it's, as I said, it's tough work, it's hard, it's hard to find them, it's hard to get them to talk. And the resources are there to help.
Yeah.
But um, we still miss a few.
Oh yeah, yeah. But anyway, you're running for, what term is this now, you, you, how many years have you been on?
Well, this is my fifth year because I came in on, on a cycle to fill in. And uh, so I did a two-year stint and then I got re-elected and I've done, this will be the end of my third year for that one.
So is it a three-year that you run or is it two-year every two years? So every three years you run?
Every three, right.
And now with the way they've got it, got, you know, figured out that we, you, you know, we're bunched in with wards, we're not, each ward, we're, we're in with wards, what, we're bunched in together with what?
I'm running in wards one, two, three and four, which is District One.
Okay.
And uh, so I will, and I have been working very hard to connect with those folks and to let them know who I am.
Yeah.
To re-acquaint with some. There was some competition this year, which I think is fine. It's kept me on my toes.
Now, who's competing in, is it, is it competing against you or is it competing against all of you together?
Um, well, particularly against me.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And um, and so what it's done is it's sharpened my game. It's um, it's got me to, to do some work, to get out there on social media and, and tell people what I'm about, what I've done, what I wanna do and uh, my, my daughter is a, Sarah is a, is a great campaign manager.
Is she?
And uh, so she, she's got that title, whether she wants it or not, she, she advises me a lot. She's very much into politics and elections and so, um, she's pushed me and done a good job.
Why did you get involved in the first place?
Well, because as I, as we talked about a little bit ago, I, I love school. I love teachers, I love school.
Okay.
And uh, so I became a teacher, I think because of that, I became a principal because I wanted to go further.
Well, what school?
I was principal at Winnebago Middle School in Tilton.
Up there, okay.
Yep, for, uh, I was assistant for two years and then principal for eleven.
Wow.
And then uh, when I got, when I retired, um, I had always thought, how do I stay in it without being in it? How do I stay in education? Because I, I'll, again, love it. And so School Board was a natural process and um, you know, when you love something, you wanna be a part of it all the time. When you're competitive as I am, I wanna be, you know, I wanted to be the head teacher or I wanted to be the principal, be a School Board member, those are just natural things for me because I love the process.
Didn't you teach at Broken Ground?
I did, nineteen wonderful years.
Really?
And uh, yep, I had uh, had I not been encouraged away, I think I would have still been there and been pretty happy. I never, I never regretted a day there, I loved it.
How many years has that school been open though?
It was open, I believe, in nineteen seventy-four.
Really?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's one of our old schools right now, didn't seem possible, does it?
No, it don't.
You know, that and Beaver Meadow, that seems to be a lot newer, um, are, are our old schools for elementary schools.
So that's when they broke up the, the elementaries and started keeping them kindergarten through second and third, fourth and fifth went over there or four, at the time, fourth, fifth and sixth went over there.
Yep.
Okay.
And it was, at Broken Ground's beginning, it had three schools within one school.
Yeah, East, Mid, Dame.
Traditional, there was a continuous progress and then there was an activities center. Three different philosophies, three different approaches. And uh, I was fortunate enough in some cases that I had the same students for grades four, five and six because I taught grades four, five and six combined.
So another kid said, oh, good gosh, we got him again.
I know, yeah, right? I still hear from some.
Do you really?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting. So what's gonna, what's the, what's the big hot topics?
Well, I think, I think the obvious one is full-day kindergarten, um, whether or not to have full-day kindergarten. I don't think it's a topic of whether or not we should have it. I think there's pretty much everybody in the, in, who does any sort of research agrees that it's beneficial. It's whether or not we can afford it in Concord. And then there's that third part of it is those folks who say, well, how can we not afford it? Because it prevents so much expenditure and so many difficulties for kids in the future.
What is it like, is it one respect, an all-day babysitting service?
By no means. One of the things that we did as a board is we asked the superintendent to do an, an early childhood study and that was conducted last year, to really decide what are the benefits of having preschool? What are the benefits of having a full day? What are the benefits of a half a day? And the results of those study indicate that preschool is very important. And there are some preschools in Concord, lots of them, there are some preschool kids that we take care of as city. And uh, full-day K is definitely a benefit, it's definitely a benefit as long as it's, it's properly guided in instruction.
I can remember kindergarten, when I was in there, it was, it was half-day. And Miss, Miss Selsby was my, was my kindergarten teacher at Dame School. She must have been probably eighty years old, I'm sure she wasn't, but she looked it. And we, all we did was, we maybe learned the alphabet, learned the numbers and played with toys on crafts maybe and we would have a nap, we had to have a nap, maybe a half hour nap or a twenty minute, whatever. And if you, this is a part that I laughed, if you got caught hitting a kid, you had to sit in the corner with nylon stockings on your hands. She would put a pair of nylon stockings on each hand, a pair of one stockings.
Well, thank God, times have changed.
And then that's how you got punished by hitting another kid, you would have to wear a pair of nylon stockings.
Well, what we know right now, Dick, is that the kids still need that social time.
Yeah.
Um, in, in fact, the research told us very clearly, they still needed that social time, it's a real important component of kindergarten. But we also know that there are kids that come in at all different levels. And so, sure, they need the arithmetic and they need um, the reading skills that can prepare them for the next grade. And those things can be done more easily in a longer time period.
But you know, it's sad though, Tom, is the fact is that we've got kids coming in knowing how to do a computer at five years old.
Sure.
I can't figure some of that stuff out at sixty-five years old, let alone five-year-olds telling me how to do it.
Well.
You know, I, that's what it is.
Well, you're exactly right, but that five-year-old probably also needs to learn how to not hit one another.
Yeah.
And they need to share.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
And they need to learn how to behave on a playground and be polite to adults, be polite to their classmates. So those are all, those other components that need to come in as well.
You mean to tell me your teacher didn't pull you by the earlobe or, or and slam you up against the wall or something like they did in Dame School?
I, I, I won't sit here and tell you anything about any of those things.
We had one teacher boy, Mrs. Sanderson, who was, she's now dead, but not passed away, but then she became Mrs. Rustova. And oh my gosh, you prayed that you didn't get her for a teacher in second grade because she would, boo, pull you by the ear and slam you against the wall if you were bad, oh brother.
I, Dick, I, I must be an extraordinary different person because I can remember virtually every teacher I ever had.
Yeah.
And I can remember fondly about each one of them. So maybe that was my path, I don't know.
I didn't, I never, thank, oh, thank God, I never had that, but that's what they, some of them did. Boy, today's world with the ACLU or whatever, oh, you would never do that.
I, I will tell you one time in third grade that I ran across the road at Walker School to get the ball.
Yeah.
And when I got back, I got a spank on the backside. So I, but I won't go any further than that and, and you know what, I, I never forgot it, obviously.
Safety, obviously.
And it was a safety issue, so, anyway.
So you're, what about the taxes, I mean, we always keep hearing is the school taxes, taxes are killing it. We don't have kids in school and the other thing I, I have to tell you, Tom, is that as a legislator, I'm getting tired of hearing about these charter schools. What is the difference? I mean, to me, and a lot of us legislators have said this, that we feel they're private schools, but they'll, oh no, that's public schools.
Well, they are public schools and, and what they are is they're a place, and I, I'm no guru on charter schools, trust me. But they do afford students and families an opportunity to take, get a smaller class, a smaller, a smaller school and atmosphere and environment where um, they may be needed so that they can thrive in other ways.
Well, why couldn't Concord do that then? I mean, why does, why, why can't Concord small, these, you get these classes small, if that's what they want? Why have to charter, I don't know, see, this is where I'm lost.
Sure, and it's not just a matter of a small class, it's a small environment, the small physical spaces, fewer teachers. Again, that, going back to that sense of belonging.
But that tuition's gotta be right up there.
Well, I'm not sure I know anything about tuition and for charters, um, other than I know they're, they're there. But you had asked me one other question before that one, I forgot what it was. Was it some, oh, the taxes, well.
Taxes, school taxes.
We need to talk about taxes a little bit because I, I have to say that for me personally, and I won't speak for my, my fellow board members, but for me personally, last year when we talked about the vote for full-day kindergarten, I knew in my heart as an educator belonged, we, we needed it.
Yeah.
But I felt like it was my, my duty to the community to really take a look and say, could we afford it now? And we were facing some huge increase for retirement contribution, which you've heard about, I'm sure, huge increase for medical insurance. We were facing the Concord Steam closure, which meant we were gonna have to spend, well, we were estimating at that point about nine million dollars to put in new um, hot water heaters and new boilers in our schools. And uh, at that point, again, speaking for myself, I said, I know what's important to do, I just don't think we can do it right now. And people would say to me, well, Tom, what's gonna change next year, meaning this year? And I'm hoping that a couple of things are gonna change. One, we're not gonna have that tremendous hit in retirement, although it's still gonna be hefty, I'm sure. But we'll be prepared for it. Insurances, we're always gonna be watching for that to go up um, a little bit or a lot. The Concord Steam thing will be behind us. And uh, and then we can really focus on, focus on budget. And I asked Jack Dunn, who is our business administrator, and Terry Forston, at the end of last March, be prepared, we're gonna come back and be thinking about this one point two million dollars that it's gonna cost for full-day kindergarten as you build the budget. Not when you present it to us as a board, but as you build it beginning in September, be thinking about that. So that's a hot topic, um, taxes, we're talking about it. I know our, our Ford President Clint Cogswell always thinks about, you know, well, what does this mean to the taxpayer? You know, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna go forth? And uh, how can we cut something and still get what we need to have? It's tough, very tough, it's very tough. I have had people call me and say, Tom, if we increase taxes too much more, they're gonna have to leave their house.
Oh yeah.
You know, and, and I remember who those people are, they called me last year during the whole full-day K stuff. And um, I remember it, I, I will not spend money without thinking very carefully about it.
Well, the elderly, I mean, they're, the first ones will say, we have no kids in school, why should we be taxed the way we are? And that's true, I mean, it comes down, then it comes down to us baby boomers who have no kids in school either.
Right.
You know, we're getting hit hard for taxes on school levels and.
But we had our time, I mean, I had my children in Concord Schools and uh, and I was.
But see, I didn't have any kids, my wife and I wanted them, but we just weren't able to have them. So we had no kids, we had foreign exchange students for a couple of years, but that was about it. But, you know, I mean, and I don't know.
A two-board member, and this, at this point, I can speak for all of them, I'm sure. We're always questioning and concerned about spending taxpayer money, spending other people's money. And we don't do it easily.
No, I'm sure.
We do not do it easily.
I know.
The uh, you know, the other hot topic that's coming up in the future is Runlet Middle School. And uh, what are we gonna do about that? I think this year is gonna be a year for us to kinda get an idea of where we think we need to go with it. Do we build a new one? Do we um, rebuild some or all of what we have? Do we keep it on the same property? Do we move it to a different property? Once we get some answers to those things, I think we're gonna put it away for a little while and just kinda focus on the here and now, full-day kindergarten, keeping our budget as tight as we can keep it. Moving in with our technology that we're paying to have. And giving everybody, taxpayers, board members, administrators, a bit of a break and just saying, let's focus on this year for a while.
I know we gotta come there close, but do you remember what they used to call the Runlet Band?
The Dukes, was it the Dukes?
No, what were the Runlet, what was the Runlet High, Junior High Band called?
Oh, you're putting me on the spot here.
There were two bands, what were they called?
Oh, they were blue and white?
There you go.
Sure, yeah.
And what was the white band?
Oh my gosh, now you're pushing.
Now come on, what's the white band? What was the white band?
I don't know, I honestly, I have no idea.
Well, they were the more experienced ones and the blue, the blue band was the coming uppers there, they. Coming uppers there, they, the, the blue, the white band was more of the ninth grade and eighth graders. The blue band was strictly seventh grade and you might be. Stuck as an eighth grader because the white band was selective. And remember the color, the, the uniforms they wore were. Used to be strictly white shirts and dark trousers or blue trousers. Then they went to the polka dot, blue and white, remember that? That was dumb. That's what it was, but it was polka dot, blue and white for the majorettes. Which now you never see majorettes anymore. But yeah, Runlet was a, and who was the band teacher down there?
Well, there was Mr. Black, I think.
Very good.
Uh, Mr. um, Galiusso was there for a little bit and uh, the gentleman Jerry Mark.
That's right, he owns Karen Gifts.
Part owner with my sister Susan.
Yeah, really? Oh, for God's sake, that's something. But that's, you know, and I, I just, and what, and what did we always look forward to in June, it was a special day in June. That the sixth graders got a chance to look forward to.
Oh, absolutely, my wonderful memories, move up day.
That's right, move up day.
Move up day, yeah, I, I told you Dick, I mean, I. The reason I remember, I remember all of these things is I had such a great time.
And who was the famous art teacher down there?
At Runlet?
And they did some terrible things to.
Yeah, I remember her.
You should.
I remember her, um, gosh.
Scott.
Was that who it was, Grace Scott?
Grace Scott, that poor soul, they locked her in the room one, locked her in the room closet one day and. I didn't, but oh boy, that poor soul, she, she didn't get away with too much down there. I know it come into her clothes and I'd love to get you back on again because there are so many issues to talk about. The lunch programs, how many kids don't go without lunches, have no money for lunches and, you know.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you a quick plug about food, not lunches. I, I'm a member of the. The group that was picked by Mayor Boulay to talk about childhood hunger in Concord. And we met all of last year and we finally uh, were able to get a place on the city website. That shows where, where all families can find help if they need some extra help around food. And um, so my wife Patty, um, through Beaver Meadow School. And some very connected people there and some dedicated people there. Are going to be kicking off a um, program where they're able to. It would, keeping our fingers crossed it's gonna happen. Where they're able to give kids some, some food in a bag to take home for the weekend, so if they're hungry during the weekend. And out of the eyes and watchful eyes of s- school people, then they'll be able to have something to eat. And that's so cool.
You've got one teacher at Beaver Meadow that deserves the medal, I'll tell you.
Well, I think a lot of them do.
Now, there's one up there in particular that is just super. Mr. G, I think it's Mr. G, or is it Mr. P? Third grade?
Mr. Pike.
Mr. P, yep, he is one fabulous teacher. And the state Grange is honoring Mr. G, Mr. McCull, yeah, Mr. G. Mr. McCollum, uh, Jim McColl, Jim, Jim? McCollum at the Margate in late October at our convention is teacher of the year. And his name now goes on the national range. With that in mind, thank you for joining us, Tom, and I know we've gone way over, but I can't help it, it's memories. But don't forget, November seventh, election day in Concord. He's on the ballot, if you'd like him to return for another three year term, get out there and vote for him, if not, well, sayonara, but. I think he's earned his way back for another term, so get out there and vote for that, now district one, two and three, no, district.
It's uh, wards one, two, three and four.
Okay, district one, wards one, two, three and four, there you go, so.
Well, thanks very much, appreciate it, having, thanks for having me on.
No problem and.
And I enjoyed the stroll down memory lane.
Oh, I tell you, I can, we can go through that for days. And thanks to Ian Marks, my super director there and we'll have a great day. Talk with you all soon, under cutting your host for around town.